Here.
Tenny.
Here.
Owen.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Obadorf.
Hi.
Here.
Heben.
Here.
Let the record show that Mrs. Echol has shown up. At this time, I'd like to appoint Mr. Heben to act as clerk of counsel in Mr. Watchell's absence. Just need a motion.
Need a motion from council?
Second.
Vote on the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, just to let you guys know that I'm gonna run this like it's a regular council meeting. The only thing on the agenda is the presentation that Allison's going to present that'll show three different full-time options. Following that, I'm gonna open it up to city council to ask any questions or make any comments they might have, and then following that, we'll do audience remarks. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the December 11th, 2023 regular council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Vote on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda for the January 8th, 2024 regular council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Okay, there are no committee reports this evening. We'll go right to your report, Allison.
Thank you, Mayor. As everyone knows, the reason that we're here tonight is to discuss fire and EMS and the three options that the city has identified as options for moving forward with full-time fire and EMS. I'd like to start by letting everyone know that Rosford is not in a position that a lot of other communities are not in at the same time that we are. A lot of communities around the state, here in Northwest Ohio, and throughout the entire country, are struggling to staff their fire departments. I had, I have read an article on NEP Media back in April of this year, and it talks about how the entire country is struggling in order to staff its fire departments. The name of this article was "Blades of Desperation: The Fire Service's Growing Hiring Crisis." And in it, the author, Josh Friedrich, says that "In the face of rapidly escalating emergencies and dwindling resources, the fire service across the nation is being pushed to the limits as it grapples with an unprecedented hiring crisis. With experienced firefighters retiring and new recruits proving challenging to find, fire departments are increasingly stretched thin, struggling to maintain adequate firefighter levels necessary to keep communities safe." So this is not something that's just happening in Rosford. This is happening across the country. Well, what has changed? Why is it that years ago, we could staff our fire department with no problem? What's changed? What's changed in the dynamics of the United States? Well, fewer individuals are pursuing fire and EMS as a career path. More households, there are more households now where both parents work, and more single-parent homes. It's difficult to come and volunteer or work part-time for the volunteer model fire department when you have one parent in the home or both your parents are working. We have kids that are in more organized activities than ever before, and people are working in a different community today than where they live. I'm sure everybody in this room can remember when LOF would allow you to leave your job and come out and fight the fire. If you're working over in Perrysburg, they're not gonna let you leave Perrysburg to come over here and fight the fire. So the dynamics have changed, and things change, and we have to change with them. So we're gonna start with where we were. Before September of 2020, no one was staffed overnight at the Rosford Fire Station. We did not pay for overnight staffing. I arrived here in early 2020, the same time as COVID, and I was shocked when I found out that there was no one overnight at the fire station. That if a call came in to 911 between 8:00 PM and 8:00 AM, no one was at the fire station. The 911 would dispatch the firefighters from their home. They would need to leave their home, drive to the station, and then they would get in the vehicle at the station to respond to the call. I sat down with Chief Dreward and talked about this because we are in the midst of COVID, and we both discerned that we should at least try to staff the station overnight. So when we got COVID grant money, we decided that, I worked with the Public Works Committee, I'm sorry, the Public Safety Committee along with the mayor, and we discussed what we would be able to do if we could staff the overnight at the station. So we applied, we got the grant money, and we determined that we would start the 24-hour-a-day staffing on September 1st of 2020. This resulted in the first 24-hour-a-day staffing at the Rosford Fire Station in Rosford history. Yes, COVID grant money was used from September 1st of 2020 to December 31st of 2020, but that was the only time COVID money has been used. I've seen many people indicate on social media that COVID money is still being used. That's not the case. Beginning January 1st of 2021, night shift fire employee costs were included in the annual budget, and they have been ever since. Since 2020, the Rosford Fire Department budget has more than doubled. In 2020, the Rosford Fire budget was $486,968. In '21, $597,823. In '22, $862,487. In '23, $996,786. And in '24, $1,104,825 was budgeted for the Rosford Fire Department. The Rosford Fire Department budget has increased by 55% over the last five years. We are committed to having protection for our citizens. Where are we now? If that's where we were in the past, prior to just three and a half years ago, we didn't even have coverage overnight in the fire station, where are we now? In 2022, the city negotiated the fire union contract in good faith. It resulted in a nine-and-a-half increase in pay over the three-year contract. That equates to just over 3.16% per year, which is over the state average of 2.79% per year. We doubled the on-call pay. If you're not familiar with what on-call pay is, it's where we would pay you to be ready to answer a call. You don't have to be staffed at the station. You can be across the street watching a football game. You can be in your backyard having a barbecue. You can be mowing your lawn. You can be out with your children, as long as you're within the radius of Rosford. We pay you $10 an hour to be able to respond to that call. So if you signed up, you would be able to make $240 a day signing up for on-call. Previous to that, this 2020, 2022 contract, it was $5 an hour. That is, now, we increased it to $10 an hour. We also included additional paid holiday. We now have 11 in total paid holidays for part-time workers. We also included a $75 late-call bonus. And I know that a couple council meetings ago, Chris Segura jumped on me and said, "Nowhere is this in the contract whatsoever." So it's included in your packet. It's three pages from the back. It's on page 18. It's under Article 12, Section 12.13, Letter C, Scheduling, Subsection IV. And it says, "If an open shift becomes available due to a call-off within 12 hours from the beginning of the shift, the vacant shift is filled within that 12-hour period, then the employee will receive $75 for filling any or all portions of that shift." So what that means is if somebody called off tonight at 10 o'clock for a shift they were supposed to go to at 8:00 in the morning, and you picked up that shift within that time before 8:00 AM, we would pay you an additional $75 just for picking up that shift. So I know that that was quite an increase that we had in our last contract, and it is, Mr. Segura, actually on page 18 of this contract. So the city negotiated in good faith, and we believe that we had a good contract with, for the firefighters. They signed it, and we continued to do work. Then in October of 2022, Chief Dreward advised that they were having trouble getting employees to sign up for shifts to cover the Rosfords' fire station. Chief Dreward and then Assistant Chief Stotzenbach advised that they believed they had a solution that could help for staffing. They suggested if each employee on the Rosford Fire Department roster picked up three shifts per month, then we would be able to cover most of the schedule. We have a lot of employees for the Rosford Fire Department who like to work the overtime and pick up the extra shifts. But if we could be, if we were able to put a policy in place in order to get each individual from the fire department that was on that roster to commit to three shifts per month, we would have a better chance at covering all of the scheduled shifts. So a memo went out with the new three-shift policy per month, and it was sent to the all Rosford Fire Department employees on November 1st, 2022. We thought that this could get people motivated, get them to come in and cover these calls. We're asking for three shifts per month from each firefighter. And if you had a conflict, you had a wedding, you had a vacation planned, you couldn't get all three shifts in, we were just asking that they attempt to cover those three shifts, and that they could have somebody else pick up one of those for them if they couldn't cover it themselves. The fire union disagreed with this. They rejected it, and they filed an unfair labor practice against the city with the State Employment Board of Relations Board. In the first slide you'll see, and it's four from the back of your packet, if you have a packet tonight, is the actual memo that went out. It was sent to all Rosford Fire Department employees on November 1st of 2022, and the second paragraph says that "The city was hopeful that it would not have to take such a measure, given the unprecedented wage increases, doubling of on-call pay, deletion of the Fair Amount of Calls program, and assurances by the union leadership that those things would result in shifts being covered, in the last negotiation of our collective bargaining agreement." Unfortunately, that has not happened, and thus, for the health and safety of our community, we are implementing the above-reference policy. So what we needed to do was ask each of the employees to at least sign up for three shifts. If they had a conflict, they could ask one of their employees or one of their coworkers to help them and cover that shift for them. But they instead filed an unfair labor practice against the city. And then, in the middle picture and the right-hand picture you will see, these are also included in your packets. The State of Ohio Employment Relation Board dismissed the union's claim against the city, and in it, they said, "It is reasonable to require part-time employees to sign up for a minimum of three shifts per month." So what we found was that the majority of Rosford Fire Department shifts were covered in 2023 by a handful of very dedicated Rosford Fire Department employees until the fall of 2023, when four of these employees left for full-time employment at other departments. At that time, the city was unable to get our employees to cover all the shifts due to their commitments to their full-time jobs, their families, and their hobbies. We understand that you have lives outside of Rosford. So the mayor and city council authorized overtime premium pay in an attempt to motivate our Rosford Fire Department employees to step up and cover these shifts. We were not able to get all of the shifts covered. We were not able to get people to sign up for these shifts. We begged, we paid overtime, we, everything. We were not able to get these shifts covered. So rather than leave the city in a vulnerable situation, open to an emergency, we reached out to neighboring fire departments and offered their firefighters and EMTs that were not scheduled to cover the open shifts in Rosford. This was not mutual aid. These individuals were paid. This meme or picture was posted several times on social media, and it was very misleading to the community. When this picture was posted on social media, there were firefighters and EMTs from a neighboring station that were being paid to be at the Rosford Station and covering Rosford calls. This exact meme that you are looking at right here was posted on November 17th. And the reason that I know that is because on November 17th, I walked over to our fire department, and I shook the hands of the two individuals from a neighboring department and thanked them for covering our hours that we were unable to cover. I walked back over here to City Hall, and there was a public safety meeting going on from Rosford City Council, and I invited the members of the Public Safety Committee to go over to the Rosford Fire Station and meet the two individuals as well, and they can attest that they went over and met the individuals that were working at the station, even though this meme was posted and made everybody in town very nervous and very upset and very afraid that they wouldn't have any coverage if they called 911. There were actually two firefighters in the station that were ready to respond to your calls. In addition, employees from the Rosford Fire Department were on-call and responding to calls. We earlier talked about the on-call, how we had increased the pay from $5 to $10 an hour. There are many individuals on the Rosford Fire Department who still respond to the on-call. So it is very misleading to let the public believe that if they had called 911, there would be nobody that responded to their emergency. Not only did we have local firefighters from a neighboring community in our station, we had Rosford Fire Department employees on-call, and then there was always mutual aid. So there was no reason to let the community believe that they were completely left alone and that nobody would respond. So if that's where we were and where we are, then where are we going? So more than three years ago, the city of Rosford began looking at fire department staffing. We understand that the volunteer-part-time model is going away, and it's very difficult for people with the lives they have today in order to do so. We participated in a joint district study to evaluate the feasibility of creating a joint fire district and EMS district in Northern Wood County. This was the result of it. It's 143-plus-page report. We participated in this study. Council gave us the approval, and we got that information back in late 2022. At that time, the city began discussions with other local communities nearby, and we met at least once a month determining what exactly was gonna happen in Northern Wood County. What could we do better? And what else was anybody else experiencing in their part-time volunteer fire department? What we found was that other communities are either currently or will be in the very near future experiencing similar staffing shortage to what Rosford is right now. So where is it we are going? We are moving to full-time staffing, and here are the three options that we have identified for city council to consider. Let me remind you that all three of these options will provide for 24-hour-a-day coverage from the Rosford Fire Station right next door at 133 Osborne Street. I'm gonna go through each one individually, and we're gonna start with the one in pink. The option is a standalone, full-time Rosford Fire Department. The concept would be that the city would hire 15 full-time firefighters and EMTs. The timeframe to make that happen would be six to 12 months, and the cost to the city is estimated at $2.7 million. The millage that would be required would be a total of 9.5 mils. The city of Rosford citizens currently pay 3.8 mils for their fire services. The general fund would pay 1.5. The 9.5 mils would equal 1.2 million, and that would cover the 2.7 million that we have estimated that a standalone, full-time Rosford Fire Department would cost. The additional cost to a homeowner of a $100,000 home would be an additional $200 per year, or $332 total. The benefits of a standalone, full-time Rosford Fire Department. The Rosford Fire Station would be staffed and manned 24 hours a day. The negatives of a standalone, full-time Rosford Fire Department. It would more than double the level, the levy millage cost to the Rosford citizens. Currently, the citizens pay 3.8 mils, or $133 per 100,000 home valuation. This option would increase to 9.5 mils, or $332 per 100,000 valuation. The average home in Rosford is valued at approximately $200,000. So currently, they'd be paying $266 a year, which would increase to approximately $664. Again, these are all approximations because everyone's home is valued at something different, but this would be around $100,000 home or a $200,000 home. The next negative would be that there would be no immediate solution to the staffing issue. Right now, we are having difficulty getting people to sign up to take these shifts. If we had to wait six to 12 months in order to get a full-time fire department together and hire 15 people, there would be no immediate solution for what we need right now. The next negative would be it's very doubtful that we could find 15 full-time EMTs in this job market. It would take six to 12 months minimum to establish if we could find those workers. It would be a duplication of costs for vehicles, equipment, training certifications, because if we were paying for ladder trucks, and we were paying for tankers, and we were paying for certifications, so would Lake, so would Northwood, so would Perrysburg Township. Everyone would be paying all of these costs, and it would be a duplication of costs that would not be necessary if we cooperated and worked with one of our local area departments. There's no other community of similar size in Ohio that has standalone, full-time fire. It doesn't answer the issue of trains blocking the railroad tracks. And if we were to build a fire station that was south of the railroad tracks, estimates have been as high as $10 million to build such a fire station. The full-time staffing costs. Now, there was a lot of talk on social media about how 2.7 million was too much for a full-time fire department and that our estimates were wrong. That's not the case. We had originally looked at, Chief Dreward and Assistant Chief Stotzenbach had come forward with a plan to hire three full-time people, so we looked at between three and five staffing, and it came in at about $1.9 million. We realized that that wasn't enough, because in order to make sure that we had coverage, we can't get people to fill shifts now. If we have one person, we need two. So if we only have one full-time person on, we're still gonna have to depend on people to volunteer or work part-time for that second slot. So we need 15 full-time people to be sure that we are always covered, and that price comes in at $2.7 million, and the hourly wage on that is $27 per hour. I think that $27 per hour might be low, because if we pay $27 an hour, it's not gonna be long until our neighbors will pay 28, and then they'll steal the people from us, and then the neighbors, and it'll be constant circle of people that will be stealing from each other. If anyone has questions after the meeting on how we came up with 2.7, Chris Kirk, our finance director, will be happy to go through that with you, and it's also included on the very vast, very last page of this packet. Again, this is a list of cities in Ohio that are of similar size, between 4,500 and 6,500 in population. Cities of this size work with neighboring townships and communities because it allows them to be more cost-effective, and it allows them to utilize the same limited pool of qualified employees. We're back to the spreadsheet, and we're going to move on to the second option. This is the option in yellow. This option would be to form a fire district with one or more of our neighboring communities. The concept is that the city would form a fire district with one or more of our neighbors. It would be set up very similar to when we joined the Northwestern Water and Sewer District. It would have its own board. The city would probably have some, a member on that board, and that board would direct that district, that fire district. The timeframe, in order to set that up, six to 12 months, and I think that that's being very, very optimistic. I think it would take longer than that. The cost to the city is an estimated $2.5 million. The millage that would be required for that option would be eight mils. And again, remember, we're currently paying 3.8 mils. Eight mils in Rosford equals about $1 million. And if the general fund paid 1.5 million, and we had eight-mil levy for 1 million, that would be the required estimated $2.5 million to form the fire district. The additional cost to the owner of a $100,000 home would be an additional cost of $147 a year, or $280 total. That would be on a $100,000 home valuation. If we form a fire district with two or more of our neighbor communities, the benefits are as follows. The Rosford Fire Station would be manned 24 hours a day. The regionalization would create significant grant funding opportunities. I think if you went and talked to the county commissioners, if you talked to our state reps, if you talked to people across the country and said, "Hey, we're having an issue. We're unable to staff our fire station," I think that they would encourage, and they're looking for people to work together and regionalize. It allows for the shared cost of vehicles. Not everybody would have to have a ladder truck. Shared cost of equipment, training, and certification. It allows for shared personnel when there is a fighter-fighter and EMT shortage. It provides coverage from multiple locations. We would, just wouldn't be running from the Rosford Fire Station. There would be multiple locations because our neighbors also have fire stations. It answers the issue of coverage when trains are blocking the railroad tracks. The negatives associated with forming a fire district with two or more neighboring communities. It's, again, no immediate solution to our staffing issues. Again, we have issues filling our shifts right now. This does not provide an immediate solution to staffing. It more than doubles the levy millage to Rosford citizens. Currently, citizens pay 3.8 mils, or $133 per 100,000 valuation. This option would increase it to eight mils, or $280 per 100,000. The average home in Rosford is, again, valued around $200,000. So while you would be currently paying $266 a year, it would increase to approximately $560. Another negative with forming a fire district with two or more of our neighboring communities, only one person can be the chief, and it would be a loss of the autonomy of the Rosford Fire Department. So we're back to the spreadsheet with the three options again, and remember, each of these three options provides for 24-hour coverage at our station next door at 133 Osborne Street. So the final option is the green, contract with the neighboring community. The concept here is that the city would contract with the neighboring community. The timeframe would be about four to six weeks. The cost to the city would be approximately $1.6 million. The millage required would be, there would be no additional millage is needed. We would just need a renewal of the current 3.8 mils, and the general fund would pay the 1.6 million. Again, there is no additional cost to the citizens of Rosford because the current millage would cover this option. The benefits of contracting with the neighboring community? No additional tax millage required. Citizens would continue to pay the 3.8 mils, or $133 per 100,000 valuation. It would provide for almost immediate 24-hour coverage from the Rosford Fire Station, and this would create significant grant funding opportunities due to the cooperative nature. It would provide coverage from multiple locations, and it answers the issue of coverage when trains are blocking the railroad tracks. The negatives associated with contracting with the neighboring community? Only one person can be the chief. Look where we were. Just over three years ago, we didn't even provide coverage from 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM out of our Rosford Fire Station. Look where we are. We worked with other area fire departments to keep our city covered and our citizens safe due to decreasing numbers in our ranks. We understand that the part-time volunteer model does not work anymore. Look where we are going. We heard you, Rosford. We understand your concerns, and we are moving to full-time fire. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. At this time, I'd asked city council if they had any questions or comments. So instead of going in order, I'll just ask you to raise your hand. Go ahead, Mrs. Echol.
One thing we didn't cover in that presentation, Allison, is the fact that we have been applying for staffing grants the last, I don't know how many rounds, and have not...
Received any.
Received any.
Yes, you're right, Caroline. Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Brenna.
So while I think, well, that we would all agree that the current staffing situation at the Rosford Fire Department isn't in the place that we'd like it to be, I did just wanna thank both the EMS and firefighters for showing up and for expressing your voice. And I also like to thank the city administration for the work that they've put in to create these three options and present them to council. I truly believe that everyone in the room wants to see the city do better and ensure that our neighbors, friends, and family can all rest assured that there will be adequate staffing should an emergency arise. There's urgency to this issue for several community safety-related reasons, and I believe that it's important to have a broader discussion with the community prior to making a decision on these plans. Doing this allows for input from those that may feel unheard on this issue or simply have questions which will inevitably help build resident buy-in once a decision on how to proceed is made. I believe that this should go three readings and I believe also that we all feel a little bit burned about how things have gone, but what we can all agree on is that we want to move forward and do better. And I think that that should be the focus moving forward.
Gotcha. There is no ordinance to vote on.
Yeah.
So we're, yeah, I mean, we would have to come up with that.
Right, right.
More dialogue. Okay, is there anyone else? Mrs. Tenny.
I also want to thank everybody for coming. I think it's really great. It's good to see democracy in action. I did meet with Allison and Chris already and asked them a bunch of questions before this meeting, so I'd be more than happy to go over that with anybody who wants to talk to me about what I asked. I'm agreeing. I just want to move forward. I want the city to be safe. I want to do it in a practical manner. I want to take everybody's considerations in. I'm not sold on any one plan. I'm still open. I do want to assure you on that. I do have my opinions and we can talk about that if you'd like individually, but I just want you to know that, yeah, I think most of us here truly want to do what's right and move forward and keep our city safe. So please contact me if you have any other questions. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else? Okay, I'll go to audience remarks. Please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record and please try to speak into the mic. We've had some technical difficulties past couple times. Keep your comments to three minutes. Anyone?
Chris Sigara, 624 Brons Drive. I'd like to ask for more than three minutes, please.
Sure.
Just wanted to go through Allison's presentation that she gave real quick, starting from the top. The fire budget increase was levy money, correct?
I'm sorry?
The fire budget increase was levy money, is that correct?
Not at all levy money, no.
So some of this is general fund?
Majority of it's general fund.
Okay. Second page, you guys stated you gave us paid holidays, additional paid holidays, 11. That was to have parity with the PD. You covered the $75 late call bonus. Next slide was, you stated in 2022, October of 2022, you were notified or advised of having trouble getting employees to sign up for shifts. I believe everyone was told on council at the time in 2018 that we were struggling with staffing. The next bullet point below that, you say that Chief Dreward and Assistant Chief Stotzenbach advised they believe they had a solution to the staffing issue. I believe that was the ULP.
It wasn't. I just talked to Josh about this earlier.
You didn't, you and Ken didn't create that policy and put it in place?
We created the policy based on what the chief said that he thought would help. Where's Josh? Did we not discuss that?
We did discuss that.
Yeah, so...
So the ULP was filed because it was a unilateral decision that was not involved, that the union was not involved with. In turn, the ULP did get dropped or get denied, which in turn, during that time, the policy was dropped. The overtime help from our neighbor's slide, you said that the mayor and city council authorized overtime premium pay in an attempt to motivate our RFD employees to step up and cover their shifts. What overtime?
We offered double time.
Twice.
Mm-hmm. Because we needed the shifts covered.
I asked for clarification on that and the stipulations involving that and nobody ever responded to my emails.
I thought you met with, with us. I thought you met with the administration.
Okay, that didn't happen. And the premium pay? Next bullet point, you paid other neighboring departments double time and continue to pay them double time up to this point, correct?
No, no. We pay them exactly what they would be getting if they signed up for that shift. But let's say they were working at their own department and they were in overtime status and they came over here. Instead of working over there in the overtime status, we paid them over here in the overtime status. If they were not in overtime status, we did not pay them that.
So for instance, Northwood has people on to cover us and to cover their own shifts.
Nope, there was, oh, no. It was always separate. They would have people on, they had a crew that covered their own city. They had another crew that was covering for Rossford.
I was just clarifying that.
Yes.
Northwood had one for us, one for them.
Yes.
They are all being paid that.
No. They are being paid what they would be if it was overtime status. In the two situations that we offered it to your union first, then yes, we did because we had offered it to you guys. You guys couldn't fill it, so then we offered it to them.
Okay. This slide that you posted, when you went over there, it was two Lake Township employees, correct?
It was two, yes.
Two Lake Township employees, that's the important part.
Yes, it was.
Okay. Lake Township was only providing EMS coverage to the city.
They were also providing firefighter because Barrett would bring over the equipment they needed if firefighting was necessitated.
So when a structured fire comes in, do they respond in an ambulance or a fire truck?
It would be a fire truck.
That is false because the fire down here on Rosway, there was two Lake Township EMTs on duty and they responded in an ambulance because they were told they were not allowed to respond in our fire apparatus.
Yeah, but the truth is...
That's not something that I told them.
They responded.
So did I.
They responded.
I was there. There was three other firefighters that responded from home and put the fire out with the other people that were there.
How many shifts have you worked this past year? What percentage? Huh? That's irrelevant?
I don't, I don't have that information for you right now.
How many calls have you made this past year?
Don't have that information for you right now.
What does that have to do with anything that he has?
I run the meeting, not you. If you want to come up and talk, you can come up after him.
It doesn't matter what he does or what he did last year. He's up here asking questions.
If we're answering.
Mayor, if I might?
Or drills.
You're singling him out. He's asking questions.
I can single anybody out I want.
All right, well, we'll keep moving forward so you guys don't keep going back and forth. I don't want to waste people's time here.
Chris, I'd like to get back to the last thing you asked. At the end of the day, it really only mattered that someone was covering our city because that's really what I care about, is that when someone calls 911, someone is going to go. At the end of the day, that's really all that matters.
Totally agree with you. But what you're saying is I was misleading people. We were short-stacked. We were only providing EMS coverage by Lake Township people.
That's not true.
Okay.
Hey, if you do it again, I'm going to ask you to leave. If you have anything you want to say, you'll wait your turn.
On this slide here, when was it ever discussed that 15 firefighters needed to be hired?
That's what a full-time department would require.
Why?
Because we need to be able to staff every single shift and we'd have to be able, we'd have four people on each shift and then we'd also have an extra crew so that we would not have to worry about people not coming, people not available, people that would have shifts that would go unfilled. We'd have, if we're going to do full-time, we want to make sure that every single shift is covered and that we aren't worrying and begging people to come.
I was just clarifying with the 15 firefighters.
Yep, that's what it is.
Could that not be supplemented with part-time people?
I don't know because we can't supplement with part-time people now. You guys have told me that you are busy, you have full-time jobs and I understand that. I'm not questioning that at all. I think that people, when they do come, they do an outstanding job and they work really hard, but if you have another full-time job and you have obligations to your family and you have obligations and hobbies and things that you're interested in, it's very difficult to say that you're going to staff every single shift because we're not doing that now. We want to get to a place where we are staffed every single shift.
This is why I asked for full-time staffing last through contract negotiations.
I only did the last one, Chris.
In addition to that, I asked for options to increase our staffing along those lines to allow for budgeting purposes. What was I told?
We don't have the money.
Okay. So going with that point, on November 15th, Mr. McKinnon stated that no levy would be required for any of these options. Is that correct?
No, that got misquoted.
Can I read you your quote?
Yeah.
Okay. A levy will not be needed to pay for the new full-time model, he said. We're act, in quotes, "We're actually in a pretty good position where I don't think we'll have to go out regardless of what the plan is for a levy," he said.
That was option three. That was misquoted.
Okay, so you're, okay. For the district with Northwood, in the feasibility study, is that number not $5,159,331 instead of the 2.5 estimated million?
That would be our portion and it's in this book, so if anybody's interested, they can come take a look.
Okay, I have this right here.
Okay.
One more minute.
Okay. Most of these other things were kind of your guys' points that, for your options. And the thing that I sent to all of you, there's our rebuttal to those points of the options. I'd just like to thank the members of council that did meet with me and discuss this with me. And I'd also like to say that it's very disheartening that two of the three for the Public Safety Committee did not choose to speak to me at all. So I hope we can do better moving forward and hopefully we can get this figured out shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, everybody. Mike Lord, 615 Glenwood. I'd like to say, I love this place, I love working for this place, but seeing the last time we needed coverage, we were doing the same thing when we wanted the 24-hour shift. I remember being here and it was 8:00 AM to, or 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM and we wanted help. Okay? We ended up right here again. To back up, Chris, with the EMS of Lake, EMS at Lake was not for fire. It was just for EMS. My other question is, sorry, is have we looked into anything other than a district? Maybe a co-op?
Yes.
Yes.
We have.
Okay. If we did go with option three, what is the backup plan if that doesn't happen?
You know, this is a decision that council will probably make in about four weeks. They'll vet all three plans. I'm sure they'll, they'll talk to members of the Rossford Fire Department. Option three also would add about 12 more full-time firefighters that Rossford employees would have opportunities to apply for.
Apply, have the opportunity to apply? That doesn't guarantee us a job?
No, we're only taking the very best and we're only taking people that show up to work.
Okay. So somebody, and I'll, I'll sing myself out, somebody that dedicated days and weeks to this department and then had to make a choice and get a full-time job. I'm one of those four that left. Okay? I had to get a full-time job. I needed pension, insurance, and all of that. Right? So, but the rest of the people I work with here that are still kind of, I left behind, are they guaranteed that job?
No, but they're more than welcome to apply.
Okay.
And if they had great attendance and did a great job and I got recommendations from our fire chief and assistant fire chief, I would write them a personal letter of recommendation.
Now, what if somebody decided, like me, who wanted to come back?
I'd, I'd do the same for you because I, I think you've always done a great job for us and I've always been impressed with you.
Now, Allison, you made a comment that nobody, no standalone department in the area is full-time.
In Ohio.
In Ohio. That has this size, correct?
Similar, yes. Most, most, most communities this size partner with the township or a local community in order to be efficient and effective.
What about smaller departments? Have you looked at other smaller departments such as Monclova, White House, and Waterville?
They work together.
They're full-time. Monclova does now work with the White House or...
Well, that I don't know because I had one of your employees put together the list for me.
Okay. I was just asking.
Most communities between 4,500 and 6,500 do not do standalone.
Okay. And then when you come to the 15 full-timers and stuff like that, like Chris said, you know, why isn't that going to be some, why couldn't we supplement with part-timers? I can tell you, there's a model of a full-time department that has two full-timers and the rest are part-timers. You talked about the education and we're paying for the education of these people and stuff like that. I can guarantee you, if you were to put out a full-time department and ask for people to apply, you would get it. Rossford used to be known as a destination station. I can tell you, many of these people moved into this city to get on this fire department. You know? This fire department...
I didn't indicate three minutes.
Sorry. This fire department gave me an opportunity that nobody else did. Okay? I, to be completely honest, I was a kid in shambles. I had a bad past, but because of Rossford, I was able to get to where I'm at.
I know, I hired.
I know. And now I'm watching it possibly leave. I don't want that. I don't think anybody in this city wants to see it become something other than Rossford Fire. You know? And it's just, it's sad that we have to keep coming to this point where we're begging for help. Okay? None of these people are deliberately not working. All right? None of them are going, screw this, we're not working. We try. We try. We really do. But also at the same time, like, our job is tough. I ask every one of you to come do a shift with one of us and do our job. Okay? It's tough and we give it all and we're willing to give it all for people. That's it.
Rebecca Baker, 255 Osborne Street. Hi, I'm a teacher. I am not a firefighter, but I did move to Rossford because of the fire department. And I, when we moved, that was one of the appeals. The other appeal was the library being right down the street from my house, so Rossford theoretically was a great place for us to live. Right now, I am disheartened that the only positive for a Rossford Fire Department being full-time on the PowerPoint was the 24-hour staffing. I think having a full-time fire department that is Rossford-owned and staffed could be a source of pride for other citizens like me who are not affiliated with the fire department as professionals. I think it should be something that we are proud of and we advertise and that brings other people into the city.
My name's Justin Urchie. I do not currently live in the city of Rossford, but I'm employed here.
What's your address?
29391 Lindsay in Perrysburg Township. I moved to Rossford six years ago to get on this department. The whole reason I moved here. Same thing with everyone out here, we don't want to see it go. And the misleading stuff that's been going around from everybody, it's just completely disheartening. And we have Lake Township people members there again. It's Lake Township. It's not us. We want it to be us. I don't have health insurance and I work here full-time. Do you have health insurance?
I do.
If I get hurt outside of this job, I'm screwed. That's what everybody wants. We don't want double time. We don't want the money. We want benefits.
We're going full-time.
We get that, but we've been begging for that for this long and now there's an option that this Rossford Fire Department will longer stand here.
No, it'll, ours...
Yeah, it'll stand here, but it will not be Rossford. It'll be Perrysburg Township. Because it'll be staffed by them. You will be paying them to do it. It will say Perrysburg Township on the side of those apparatuses that pull out of that station, not Rossford. And the Rossford station will be gone. That stood for what, over 100 years? Is that really what you want to do, an option that gets rid of something that stood here?
I prefer safety over sentiment.
Safety. But we've been begging you to help us.
And you live in Perrysburg Township.
I do and I work here in Rossford.
So that would be ideal for you.
No, it wouldn't because I would be losing a job and I can promise you right now, I would not be applying if Perrysburg Township takes over. I am not going to compete against my brothers and sisters that I worked with for six years. I am not going to apply for a job that I've had for six years. Reapply for a job I've had for six years with no guarantee that I'll get it. And that's all I have. Sorry.
My name's Trina Ritchie. I live at 29391 Lindsay. I am not a Rossford resident, but I'm a Perrysburg Township resident. My son works for the Rossford Fire Department. I guess I'm not understanding. You keep talking about how you don't have enough employees, you don't have enough people taking shifts. Again, backing up my... Again, backing up my son. He doesn't have health insurance. He doesn't have benefits. These people are starting families. So, how are they supposed to support their families? They're supposed to get full-time jobs with benefits. Not everybody ha- not everybody has two-income families. Some is one, and they have to take care of their family. So they're working full-time jobs and not being able to be here full-time. So, I don't, I, I don't understand. They're, they're trying to be adults and do what they're supposed to do. But then you're talking about a staffing shortage. But you're telling everybody on this fire department, they're going to lose their job. They have to reapply. That doesn't make any sense to me. You have such a dedicated staff, and you're taking it away from them.
They would have to apply regardless of those-
They would have to apply. They have jobs now. They're trying to serve the community. They're trying to take care of our loved ones. What happens when, you know, a house goes up in flames, or somebody has a medical emergency? Somebody has, you know, goes into cardiac arrest? They're there to save your loved one. You're taking that away from them. That's what they want to do. They want to take care of you. I mean, I, I don't understand. They're here, they're here to save our community, to save our loved ones' lives, to save your life. And you're telling them they have to apply for a job they already have. It makes absolutely no sense. You're putting them out. You're dismissing them. I, I just, I don't, I don't understand. I really don't.
We'll talk in the mic so everybody can hear. William Froboski Jr., 311 Hillcrest, Rosford. I've lived here all my life. Born here, raised here, educated. I've been out of the picture for a while, but I served 20 years for Rosford as mayor and councilman. When I first started as councilman, our fire department primarily consisted of all the LOF employees who were allowed to leave their jobs when the fire ring, and they left. I've watched probably two or three generations of turnover in the fire department. I've worked with many of the people in the fire department over the years. Unfortunately, I don't know, I know a few of them here, but not a whole lot of them. And I've seen, when I took over as mayor, we were almost half a million dollars in debt. We climbed out of that. Larry nods his head. Caroline nods her head. Through the good fortune of time and the efforts of the people around here, we've gotten to a point where we're in good shape. And we need to make sure that continues. I've listened to a lot of comments here. I've had to change some of my thinking here in some of these comments, but overall, we need to make sure that we're looking at safety and the well-being of the city of Rosford. I have watched staffing issues go down over the years. Many of us have seen, in the last couple of years, no fault of our own, fire department. Many trucks from Northwood, many trucks from Perrysburg Township coming into the city to cover us. And we had the situation once with dispatching. LGN, LOF did our own dispatching. Then we went to a district, and then we finally went to the sheriff taking over. And we can talk about shifts, and who didn't make this shift, and who didn't make that shift, and overall. And I'm not trying to trivialize it, please. I'm not trying to trivialize it all or depersonalize the situation at all. But in the final analysis, it comes down to economies of scale. What we can afford, what we can't afford, what we can make sure is our position. And I know the city has money, but it, we're talking a large, huge bite to staff this full-time by ourselves. As we have heard, we've got neighboring communities out there that are suffering worse than I, ours are. And at some point, that's gonna have to be addressed. And I know people will say, "Well, that's neighboring communities. That's not Rosford. We just shouldn't need to worry about it." It's the region. The region needs to be whole and safe. And I'm sorry for some of the, for some of our firefighters and firewomen out there. I'm not taking this personally. I am not. I'm working at it as much as it should be the good for the community. So, I support some type of either district or regional community or something that would help. And I know I'm gonna take a lot of flak for that, but believe me, in eight years, sitting where you're at, I took a lot of flak. Got to the point where I took the blows, and I ended up better for it. You have a hard decision to make. You really do. But I still think some type of either neighboring or regional that is cheaper to do, and, and the bottom line covers us 24 hours a day without having to worry about a shift here, or shift there, or whatever, is still in the best interest of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jerry Baker, 255 Osborne Street. I'm also somebody who moved into this city to be on this fire department. And I'll repeat, when I got on this fire department, this was the place to be. We were some of the best in EMS. We were some of the most aggressive firefighters, and it was awesome. I learned a lot here. With all this going on, I think there's been a big piece of information that's been taken away from everything else, and that is the people that you have working at your fire department are some of the best that you want. I love working with them. I trust them with my life. My wife trusts them with my life. They are the best of the best. And with option, all these options, you're kinda throwing that away. So I would really hope they all think long and hard about who do you have now compared to what you're gonna get. That's all.
Tiffany O'Connor, 144 Colony Road. I've lived in Rosford my whole life. I got on the fire department 22 years ago. Back then, there were 32 people on the fire department, and we started our shifts. It was 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. We couldn't fill all of our shifts back then with 32 people. Everybody had a full-time job, and it wasn't always all fire. We asked for help 22 years ago for this issue. So this isn't a new issue for the fire department. Then we went to the 8:00 to 8:00, and then the 8:00, now to the 8:00 AM, and here we are now. We now have 20, 18 to 20 active numbers of the department. And probably eight that live in Rosford to respond to calls. And you want us to fill, there's 28 to 30 days in a month, times two. You want us to fill 60 shifts with, we'll say, 20 members. That's a little difficult. Especially when everybody but two of us has a full-time job someplace else. And then you wanna go full-time and hire 15 more? If we go full-time, like everybody else said, we'll absolutely get people. We're not getting them now because we're volunteer, because we don't have benefits, and because we don't have insurance. Everybody's going everywhere else because of the insurance and because they have benefits. I've been there 22 years, and I have nothing. But I am there every weekend, working my 12-hour shifts, every Saturday and every Sunday. You will find me there. Because I am dedicated to this department, and I love it, and I don't want to go anywhere else. And if that option three goes up there, I am not gonna apply for Perrysburg Township, because they are not gonna hire a 50-year-old woman, and I will tell you that right now.
Anyone else?
Rex Huffman, 26076 Thompson Road, Perrysburg. I think most of you know me. I hope. I've been around a couple of years. I've spent half my life here in Rosford and the other half out in Perrysburg Township where I live. I'm also general counsel for the Wood County Port Authority. We contribute a significant amount of money to commission that study. Because with the Port Authority, we're asked a lot, you know, we do a lot of economic development. We also do a lot of grant finding, right? So, I think the first time I met Allison was working on funding for North Baltimore and Henry Township. They were having serious fire and EMS issues down there. So we've been at this fire and EMS. It's all over the county, I can tell you. I was at a Township Trustee Association meeting, I think it was in December. And the focus of that meeting, half the meeting, was spent on the plight of fire departments across the county, whether it's the full-time departments in Bowling Green or Perrysburg, or the part-time departments like here in, in Rosford. So, we, the Port Authority fully believed it was a wise contribution of money to form the study to see if there's another way to provide this service, because everybody deserves it. Everybody deserves to, it's your core business, keep people safe. You have three options. It looks like you've committed to that you're gonna go full-time. So, you know, everybody, I think, is on the same page which option you pick. Luckily for you, some of you new ones, you get to make these fundamental decisions right out of the chute, right? This isn't like picking, you know, the, the day you're gonna have some celebration here in town. This is, you know, this is big stuff that's gonna be important to you, and I hope you spend the time to do all the studying you have to do, rely on the expertise of some of your seasoned veterans here that have been around the block a couple of years. But ultimately, we have to commit to going to a full-time department. I, of course, urge the regional stuff. That's what I've spent the last 30 years of my life working on, regional cooperation, regional efforts. I think that's the biggest way to go. I can't minimize the point on your PowerPoint thing is the grant dollars. That is where you get the best chance for success, is when you can show those funding agencies that you have multiple jurisdictions benefiting from those grants. So, please, study this hard. I know you will. And at the end of the day, I think we're all gonna be better off because you end up with a full-time fire department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask Roxanne Costa?
Yep.
Speaking of regionalism, and I don't know, maybe you can't speak to this, but Lucas County had regional fire, and then they pulled back, and then they're just gonna fund local departments?
I think that was EMS.
EMS.
That they pulled out.
EMS.
Wood County had that too. Matter of fact, for the last, I don't know, Tom, year, I think I've been working with the county. Like I say, this EMS is the, seems like to me, the folks in the department would be able to answer this more, but it seems like EMS is the hard one here, because you have so many more runs now. So the county has asked us, and we've been looking at this as a county effort for months. And so, hopefully, on the EMS side, we'll get some effort there.
Can I add to Lucas County figure, real quick, to your point?
Chris, you gotta state your name and address for the record, and come up to the mic, please. It's all good.
Chris Leguero, 624 Brunson. To your point of Lucas County, I actually work in Lucas County at Toledo Fire. We run Lucas County Life Squads. That's going away, June 3rd. June 3rd. That's no longer.
Right.
Because the money's out there for them. They're losing money every day, and they can't fund it anymore. So now, the, all the departments that are in Lucas County now take over their own ALS, BLS services. So Lucas County provides ALS services to Lucas County, Ohio. They will be no longer, and all the departments in Lucas County will provide ALS, BLS, EMS services.
So, currently, Lucas County provides EMS, and each community provides fire? Is that?
Provides ALS.
Okay.
Advanced Life Support EMS.
Right. That's what Lucas County supplies?
Yes.
And then?
And that's for Toledo, Springfield, Mami, Oregon, Waterville White House. I knew there was some more.
So all those communities right now just have, their, their entity is just fire, and the county supplies, no?
So, they provide fire and EMS.
Okay.
And their people provide fire and EMS.
Okay.
They ride Lucas County Life Squads, paid for by Lucas County. The supplies, everything is paid for by Lucas County. That will be no longer June 3rd.
Right. And so now they're saying Oregon, Toledo, you know, whoever you just named off, figure it out?
It was supposed to happen January 1st.
Okay.
Yes. Do I get three more minutes? Go ahead. Where did you get the $10 million for the, I'm sorry, was it? The station, the second station for our option, it was on that slide that you just said. I got it right here. $10 million for a 15,000-square-foot fire station. Where did you get that?
Right here. Let's see, so Akron, which is in Ohio, May of 2023, which was just this last spring, a 15,000-square-foot fire station with the price tag of 9.5 million, right here.
Are you aware what the Perrysburg City new station cost?
I am not.
6.9 million for a 22,000-square-foot four-bay drive-through with the ability to accommodate 12 full-time firefighters.
When was that built?
As the department administration staff and a training room.
When was it built?
2019. 2019. In addition to that, on the thing that I provided all of you guys, there's a link there for Firehouse puts out annual awards to fire station builds and plans. $10 million, there was multiple options on there, in the 10 to, I believe, $15 million range for entire public service complexes. So, training facility, police, fire training facilities, fire station, police station. An entire fake city was, I believe, the $15 million one that was able to be provided to this city for $15 million. So do you have a plan for a fire station that got you?
We do not. No, we do not.
Okay.
It actually said to up to, I said it, it could be up to $10 million.
Estimated $10 million to build a 15,000-square-foot fire station, which would require approximately 77 mil levy. Could equate to more than 7,000 increase for citizens.
Absolutely. That's what it would be. If we had to do, if we had to do a levy on $10 million, that's what it would be.
Okay. But, and again, there's just no plan for that. It's just an estimate of $10 million.
It's just an estimate up to, based on this article, it could be up to $10 million in order to build a new station. So no, there's no plan for that. Never has been.
Okay.
You got one more, one more question?
I'm sorry?
You got one more question?
Sure. Your points about the railroad tracks provides no ability for us to get to the South District. That's incorrect. We have ways to get to the South District if there's railroad, or trains blocking Lime City and Glenwood. The time difference being, if we leave our station knowing that there's a train, we can detour to our furthest point in our South District, which is Meyer, with a two-minute longer response time. We still have access to the South. It delays our, our ability to respond some, yes. But we just, we aren't just leaving that without coverage when there's a train. I know that was a point you hit on, and I just wanted to clarify that. Please review the thing that I sent you guys. And if you have questions, get ahold of me. Thank you.
Thank you. We got time for one more.
Joyce Tyson, 27340 Lime City Road, Perrysburg. I know you are not gonna be happy with what I have to say, but we definitely need another station out in the crossroads. I had to wait a very long time for an ambulance to my house, and then here I've got Perrysburg Township a quarter mile south of my house, where they could have been there in five minutes. Something needs to be done out there. It's not all just here in the city. We need something out there. Thank you.
All right, Gary, you're the last one.
I won't need all three minutes, yeah, I promise. Gary O'Connor, 144 Colony Road. I've been taking all this in. I've been reading everything. Yes, social media, you know, I, I take a look at everything that you guys put on there.
I've been taking all this in, I've been reading everything, yes, social media, you know, I, I take a look at everything that you guys put on there. But, you know, Tiffany, come up here, you know, twenty-two years on the fire department. We have a twenty-eight-year-old special-needs son. She's here regardless if he's sick or in hospital, regardless, she does her job. We gotta get out of the concept of field of dreams, if we build it, they will come. We got too big. When I was fourteen years old, you had thirty city workers, thirty. Tyler, how many you got now, six?
Six.
Rossford stopped at Eagles. On the other side of the Eagles was nothing but field. It was it. Thirty people, twenty people? As the city grows, so does your fire department, so does your Public Works Department and everything else. It's great that you're bringing all this stuff to the city, but you're putting people out of jobs, Neil. Twenty-two years, really?
We're creating jobs.
No, you know, so, so listen, let me ask you a question. So somebody that's been on the fire department for twenty-two years has to reapply, you're creating jobs? Let me tell you how it works in industry. I'm an educator. I work for Toledo Public Schools, I got a degree. A company takes over a company, they keep them employees. They keep them. Not if you made calls, you're this, or this and that. Too many stipulations, man. This is the city of Rossford. Your famous line was, hey, I believe in Rossford. And you're gonna sell it out at one-point-six-million dollars? Look at that fiasco, a hundred-and-twenty-five-year anniversary we had in Rossford, we lost money. Everybody asks for figures, nobody gives them to us, we're like, stock. You wanna do a get-together, have a picnic at the park? Cook hot dogs and hamburgers. Don't spend millions and hundreds of thousands of dollars for something that doesn't bring us any money. You're selling us out, dude. Born and raised here, you're a sellout. Don't be a sellout, Neil. Don't be a sellout. That's all I got.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
One more second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it.